Thank you.
At least I didn't have to see it this time. That's helpful. Okay.
Thank you.
Is it okay? Yeah, all right. Thank you. Good evening. We've already opened the meeting before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. We're live streaming on MCTV right now and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the Gill-Montague Regional School District website. Ordinarily, this is the opportunity for public participation because Policy BEDH has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely, but we have no one this evening wishing to do that. Please remember if you're in our Zoom audience to keep your video and microphone off while you're watching. We appreciate that. Thank you. Brian?
Pandemic Response Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow and we're in the process of putting together a survey for families. To see if we can sensitively gather some information about, you know, how their home lives have changed, whether it's the kid or the parent, and as a result of that, what kind of supports they might need. I wanted to say thank you very much to Melissa Bednarski, our nurse leader, who has arranged for us to be hosting a vaccination clinic tomorrow from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the high school for all students ages 12 and up. The second dose of that of the Pfizer vaccine is scheduled for Thursday, June 17th. The High School National Honor Society induction ceremony will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, May 26th at 7:00 p.m. in the High School Theater. Congratulations to all of the year's inductees. Just a reminder that there's no school on Monday, May 31st for Memorial Day. And the following week, the senior walk-through will take place at the elementary schools on the afternoon of June 3rd. The evening of June 3rd at 6:30 p.m., the senior awards night will be held. Graduation for the class of 2021 will be held on Friday, June 4th at 6:30 p.m. The Sheffield Girls on the Run team will hold the 5K road race on Saturday, June 5th at 10 o'clock in the morning at Sheffield Elementary School. And the Hillcrest School Council meets on Tuesday, June 8th at 3:30 p.m. And that's it for events at this point. There are no student representative.
Whoops.
Student representative, seniors, high school committee informed about high school and middle schools here. I want to wish them both luck in achieving their secondary goals and doing whatever, doing whatever careers they choose to pursue after high school. They're both fine young leaders and I'm sure they're the kind of people who will definitely be making the world a better place.
Yes, thank you from all of us.
Effective updates from the commissioner, and I know that this has sort of been all over the place and we've already made some changes that have been in place as a result of the impact of the governor's decision. But effective Saturday, May 29th, all industries will be permitted to open with the exception of remaining face cover requirements for public and private transportation systems and facilities housing vulnerable populations. All industry restrictions will be lifted and capacity will increase to 100% for all industries. In addition, the gathering limit will be rescinded as of the 29th. On June 15th, the governor has indicated that the state of emergency related to the pandemic will end. This order includes rescinding the order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And as of the time I wrote this report, the school committee and other municipal governing bodies will need to begin to meet in person after June 15th. However. Rena and Jane received an update today that it has filed a bill to consider extending the provisions to September 1st of this year to allow public meetings to continue to be held remotely. And so we'll be, when you posted on that, if anything changes, I'll send that information out to the committee right away. There's no separate guidance coming from the Department of Education relative to summer school. The commissioner indicated in our previous meeting, our most recent meeting, rather, summer programs will be using the most updated guidance from this past school year for summer school. Last Friday, the updated mask protocols that the school committee voted to allow us to make changes to for outside mask wearing were implemented at the secondary level to be able to provide immediate mask relief for our participating athletes. Elementary principals took a day, took two days to consult with their staff about any concerns they had, be able to make building-based changes, and they implemented those for outdoor activities today. So just in advance of the 90-degree day tomorrow. So I appreciate the work that the elementary principals did in taking the time to work with their staff. In terms of the COVID data in the area, you can see on the report that there are no towns in the red now. I know Greenfield had, Greenfield and Montague both remain with reasonably elevated status as there are still cases in the area, 23 in Greenfield and 13 in Montague. But overall, percent positivities in cases have been going down consistently with date totals from two weeks ago being cut in half, probably or largely do, I'm assuming, to high levels of vaccination. And then in terms of staffing, we're still looking for applicants. The elementary summer program in Sheffield, our most pressing staffing need at this time is for teachers and support staff as well as special education staffs for severe need students for the high school and middle school summer programs. In addition, we're also preparing to hire summer food service to provide meals to students in the summer programs and to fulfill any community food service needs with which the district might provide support. And that's it for the very brief superintendent's report for this meeting.
Mike?
Thank you. In regards to delaying or not delaying the return to live meetings or in-person meetings, is that going to be a school committee's discussion?
If, all right.
I was gonna anticipate that, but I, just as a note, Tina's been working on what would be with Brian and myself on what would be involved in enabling us to meet as we have been in person, what kind of changes would need to happen? I think it sounded as if the governor's whatever bill he filed was looking at the prospect of being able to have a remote audience perhaps, which was never allowed typically unless you had an in-person audience. So that might give us some guidance in what might be expected in that sense in the future. Because it's changed, well, for one thing, it's changed the amount of people that are in the audience. They can do it remotely as opposed to having to come out and come in person. So you know, we're thinking that maybe what part of the thinking is to make it possible to do it somewhat differently. But we certainly would bring that information to the committee when we had it. It wouldn't be a decision made without for sure. Good question, though. Yeah. We just got that today, totally like in the middle of the day. It was quite a surprise. Anyone else have any questions or comments on what Brian has mentioned so far?
To keep the microphone.
Yes, yeah, as if you're in the audience.
You make sure that everybody's muted. There's one person.
Yeah. Thank you. We appreciate it. As Brian said, the students or reps are not with us this evening. We'll move along to the business and operations report. Joanne?
Sure. I have quite a few items that are also in the business section. So do you want me to cover those here or do you want me to wait until we get down to business?
It's really up to the committee. Would you rather that Joanne do it all at once or wait and get to the items in the business section as they come up? Cassie?
I, I'm good with her going for it now and getting them out of the way if the committee agrees with that.
Okay, looks like you can go right ahead.
Okay. All right. So the first one is MSBA. So we're applying for an MSBA statement of interest again for the Gill roof. So Heath and I looked at the application and we made some updates to it and it's ready to go. We just need your vote, which has to be exactly as I have in my report. Does somebody want to read the vote? They require this particular vote. Would you like me to read it?
That would be very good. And then someone could just say, I need that motion.
Okay, having convened an open meeting on May 25th prior to the closing date, the school committee of Gill-Montague Regional School District, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the Statement of Interest Form dated May 25th, 2021, for the Gill Elementary School located at 48 Boyle Road, Gill, which describes and explains the priority categories for which the application may be submitted to the Mass. School Building Authority in the future. Gill Elementary Roof Replacement, which was last replaced in 1995 with asphalt shingles, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Mass. School Building Authority, or commits the regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Mass. School Building Authority.
Do I hear that motion?
Yes, you do.
Thank you, Bill. Seconded, I think, was Heather Preps. We'll go with that, Bill and Heather. All those in favor?
Carly, yes.
Thank you. Looks like you're unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, so Jane, I will need you and Brian to both sign this in either tomorrow or Thursday. Hopefully that'll work for both of you.
Okay, I should be.
That way we can get that submitted.
Put it on my list for tomorrow.
Okay. All right. The next item is the Gill building lease. So we signed a lease a couple of years ago, or maybe about a year ago, with the town of Montague for the Montague buildings, and now the Gill lease has, is expiring. And so our attorney reviewed this. That we were, we reviewed it back in December and made a few recommendations. The select board has reviewed it and they have sent it off to their attorney to be reviewed. So this is the final version. I did put the marked up version in your packet for you as well, so you could see where the changes were. You know, a couple of the larger items that they wanted changed were adding telephone cable and internet, other utilities, list to list them all. We even have gas in there just in case. They would also like to be listed as an additional insured on our policy, which is not a problem. And then they talked about alterations or additions. And they wanted to change it from as the law may require to satisfactory to the leaser. So I have not heard back from Ray about what exactly would be satisfactory, but I guess we'll have to check with him, them for each, you know, for each job, just to be sure that we're you know, not just following the law, but following exactly what they would like us to do. The attorney Dupree also noted that the termination language of 30 days is a little short for a school, but they wanted to add that. So he doesn't think that we would be held to that, or we would suddenly be told to evacuate. So he didn't see a major problem with it. So that we also need a vote on. And you can just vote to approve the final version that's in your packet.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease.
I'll move it.
That was Cassie?
Second.
Seconded, Mike. Any questions or discussion before we vote?
And that lease is dated May 10th of 2021.
Okay.
Oh, and I should tell you how many years it is too, just so that can be in the vote. It's a 20-year lease.
Okay, so the vote is in the 20 years.
Yes. Dated May 10th, 2021. It will expire on May 31st, 2041. Somebody else will have to remember because I will not be here.
I hope I'm not here.
It may be a lot of different personnel. You just never know. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, what do you think they mean by additions? I, any changes in the building, like the new door that?
Like the new door or the floors? Yes.
Those are additions as opposed to?
Well, that was the language, alterations, additions and improvements was the language that was already in there. And so they didn't change that. They just changed it. So it's not based on what the law will require, but based on what's satisfactory to them.
Probably relates to, could relate to the need for a town meeting vote type of thing, whether or not they could accept it. But anyway, I don't know.
Right.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Anyone else? All of those in favor of the motion?
Carly, yes.
Okay, looks like we're good again. Thank you.
Okay, and then I have in your packet, March and April budget transfers, and there's no vote required on those. These are just transfers that have happened over the past couple of months. So I try to bring them to you each month. So those are just for, for review, no vote required. Um, state aid. So last year, while we were seeing major changes in our state aid, this year we're not seeing those significant changes. So the cherry sheet usually comes out in January and we start to build our budget based on that. So we use the chapter 70 number. That number has remained unchanged. So I mean, the good news is it's remained unchanged, but the bad news is it didn't go up significantly like, you know, we might have hoped. They are still saying that there, there's a fund that will be set aside. And so if our enrollment goes back to where it was in the prior year, my understanding is there'll be money available for us. If it goes, if our enrollment increases significantly as we had expected it to. A lot of districts were saying that they should use the prior year enrollment to calculate chapter 70, but they didn't want to use the prior year enrollment. What they wanted to do instead is set money aside. So that way if prior year enrollment becomes what your new enrollment is, and you just had that one year decline, then you'll be able to get some additional funding. So we'll see where we land in October. If our enrollment is up, maybe there'll be more funding for us to help educate those students. The charter reimbursement and tuition, it looks like they have more information. So the governor put his budget out, but by the time the House and the Senate were working on it, there was more information available about students going to charter. And I'm a little bit worried about the numbers of students we're going to see at charter next year. So we can't change our budget for it. We're going to have to live within our budget, but that's one of those numbers that we're just going to have to keep a good eye on. And so the chart that I included in my packet shows how the budget progresses and how it all relates to how we built our budget this year. Just for your information there. So hopefully by July 1st, we will have state budget. Town meetings, we had the Montague Town Meeting on Saturday. Jane and Brian were both there as well. And so the town of Montague approved our budget and they also approved all of our capital articles that we requested of them. The town of Gill is scheduled to meet on the morning of Saturday, June 26th. So I don't know any more information about that, but we'll see if that date stays there. I also have the transportation coordinator job description. So we received a job description from another district and used that to sort of put this together and make it look like one of our job descriptions. So the purpose of this position would be to really to manage all aspects of transportation and then drive one route as needed. And so, you know, we'd have that bus that we were able to, or the van that we were able to buy with the rural aid funding. It covered most of it. It didn't quite cover it all. And you know, this, this person would be responsible for setting up the transportation routes in TransFinder, our software that we bought a couple of years ago, and just doing all the scheduling and oversight of that transportation to make sure that, you know, where our routes are acceptable. And they would be the liaison between the schools, the parents and the bus company. So there would be the one point of contact. And I wasn't sure what the salary range would be. I wasn't able to get any salary ranges. There's not a lot of districts around here that have a transportation coordinator, except for Greenfield and Mohawk or two, but I wasn't able to get any numbers. So this is what I have for you. If you, I don't know if you want to vote this, or if you want to look at it and vote it at a different, at the next meeting.
What are people thinking? They rather hold off or would they rather vote this evening? Mike?
If you think there's a chance that we will get some of that information about salary range, that would be helpful. Voting. I mean, I don't want to interrupt the hiring process, but that does seem like an important one.
Yeah. Yeah, so I can continue to work on that.
Okay, if that's acceptable, we'll add it to the next agenda for our vote.
Okay, and that's all I have on my, my, my agenda there. I do have the treasurer's report that has the scholarships. That might be down below also. Yeah, so we can wait on that.
Okay, if that's okay, we'll do that one later.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Joanne on the items that she told us about? Okay, thank you. Under school committee reports, we have a warrant to vote approval for. It's accounts payable number 3132, dated 5/26/21, in the amount of $323,944.22. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
And Heather and Haley, thank you. Any questions about, I know we all have the entire listing of the warrant in our packet. All those in favor? Okay, very good. It's unanimous. Okay, going on to business. First item is discussion and potential vote for exception to the school transportation policy. I believe that information was sent to you separately. Brian?
So we had another request. I followed the protocol and consult with Eve Redman in Gill, and he wrote the following. "If the assessment of reviewed the concerns of the parent requesting that an exception be made to the district's transportation policy, the residence involved is on Main Road and is approximately one mile from the school. There are no sidewalks on that portion of Main Road, and there is very little space between the edge of Main Road and the guardrails. In addition, the pickup and drop-off of students at Gill Elementary often has the largest number of vehicles on Main Road during those times. A student would be walking through from school. As a result, I am recommending that the district make an exception to the transportation policy for this student and allow them to travel to and from school on district transportation."
And this does require a vote by the committee? Any discussion?
I'll move that we approve the exception.
Okay, Haley moved. Second?
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? Cassie?
Um, I'm not against this, but I just want to put it out there that if we continue to see an increase in numbers of these, I happen to live you know, on a very busy street, a little less than a mile from the school, and my husband and I have always had to drive our kids because it's not safe for them to walk at all times of the year. It's, you know, we can't make everyone happy, and I understand if it's a safety concern. But, you know, as we move forward, if we continue to get these, there is going to come a time where we have to say we can't approve them. I just want to put that out there. It's a concern I have.
Jennifer?
I think we have a little bit of save from that issue, just that it's being evaluated by someone outside of the district. We have had requests in Montague that were not recommended, that we make an exception. So I think that we can trust our officers to look at it objectively. But yeah, good, you know, it is a good point that, you know, at some point we're going to be able to afford everybody to ride the bus. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Well, I think there's two things in play here. It's definitely true that the whole area around where the elementary school is within a mile and a half, there isn't a single sidewalk on any of the roads in Gill. So that's always going to be a case in these exceptions. The the fact is going to come up, there's no sidewalks. But what's been added to it currently is especially now, the number of cars that are delivering people to the school as opposed to many of them arriving by bus has increased tremendously. It started increasing a few years ago when Montague kids were allowed to come, come in and fill slots. But now I think, I'm sure that a lot of Gill parents are driving their children too. And I only live 1,000 feet from the school. So my road, Boyle Road, is quite quiet all the time, except for from quarter of three to 3:30 in the afternoon. And of course, first thing in the morning around whenever it is school starts. And the line of traffic down at the school itself extends for it's multiple vehicles, like 50. So I can understand where the chief is accurately expressing the hazard. But again, it's, as you all have mentioned, at some point it will be too bad to have to say we, we can't continue to make exceptions. Anyway, that's what's going on here, and that's why I think the chief is making his assessment.
Thank you, Cassie.
Um, just to piggyback on what Bill says, and I don't want this to get into a big back and forth, but you could also say that there's less cars on the road as more people are working remotely now. So, you know, you could also kind of look at the, the swing of that. I question how these kids have gotten to school thus far. If it's just more, you know, I mean, I know we've been remote most of the year. I, I'll just stop there, but we can vote on it. Fine.
You're right. You're right.
Mike?
Thank you. I'm assuming that this is just for this school year. But I, especially if we can get a transportation coordinator on board. The problem for me is, is not, I'm not concerned about the, the honor of any of the people making decisions. I'm concerned about making these decisions one at a time. We should really have an idea of what, just how many people might be at risk. And that includes the ones in Turner's Falls in Montague. Cause on Cassie's side of the road there, I don't think there is a sidewalk going up the hill. So you have to, I mean, there are probably backways and things I don't know about. But, so either over the summer or beginning of next year, we should have a better idea of what the, what the total number of possible students who might be requesting the service would be so that we could have, I think that would be important to us moving forward, making decisions. I'm not going to worry so much about the last couple of weeks of school this year.
Joanne?
I also wanted to add that Montague did get a grant for the safe routes to schools. And there were some sidewalks that they had talked about putting in. So they did get a grant. They're going to be starting to go out to bid on those. So one of them will be to connect the two sidewalks on Turnpike Road. That would have been great for me 20 years ago.
Right.
For my kids who walked up and down Turnpike Road with no breakdown lane. You know, to go to school every day. Montague Street, I believe is another one. So Montague Street, the sidewalk ends at Dell Street. Doesn't extend to the fire station.
Right.
That's another sidewalk that's going to get added. And I think coming out of Hillcrest Back driveway. I can't remember what the name of that street is, but there's a short sidewalk there.
That Davis Street?
No, going straight across out of their back driveway, across as Davis Street.
Like all the way down to Scotty's?
Right, towards Scotty's.
Okay.
Yeah, because we live four blocks away from the school and there's no way to get to school without walking, without a sidewalk. But it is a quiet residential area except for school time. So no matter where you live, there are gaps. It's just the nature of, you know, our communities don't have sidewalks everywhere and the way it is. And always has been.
Yep. Turnpike Road has, you know, has Judd Wire and, you know, the dump was there years ago and the police station was there and, you know, the, the fire station. So, and all the school buses going to tech and to the high school. You know, so there's, there's a lot of places without, with the gaps. And families, you know, families are responsible for getting their children to school safely. And so, you know, I figured it out for a lot of years.
Anyone else? And it's a good point, Mike, in a traditional year, one, one hopes from now on. We might get these things all figured out at the very beginning of the year at the same time. And our coordinator could be helpful with that. Any other discussion about it? Right. All those in favor? Okay. It looks like, thank you. Will, I don't remember, Brian, did you notify the family last time or did Joanne or the principal, how was that done?
No, I notified the school and the family and then I contacted the bus company first to get a sense of when they might be able to put in this. Given that this is very close to the other top, they'll, they should be able to let me know tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. Okay. Moving on to the next item, discussion about superintendent's evaluation.
Hopefully we can implement it by Thursday. Yep.
Thank you. Next is the superintendent's evaluation. Just to let you know about the process, I think everyone except Carly has done this before perhaps. Sabrina sent the form digitally to everyone today in an email. And once each of you filled yours out without any discussion with any of the other members, it can be sent digitally, which is pref-preferred. Or you can also get a paper copy from Sabrina to fill in and submit by June 8th, please, if you could do it within the next two weeks. Then at the June 22nd meeting, Sabrina will distribute a single evaluation document, which tabulates and combines all members' ratings and includes all member comments. We are not supposed to discuss it except in open session. So the information goes to Sabrina and she consolidates it and brings it. If we're in person, she will bring it to the meeting. If we're not, it won't be sent until just prior to the meeting. Because that is part of what, the way it's supposed to happen. We'll discuss it and then members will vote to approve a final set of ratings for the superintendent's evaluation for the year. And after Brian has presented his information, if you have any other questions, you're welcome to contact him with questions or to ask for any additional information. Okay. Okay, Brian?
So I shared a document with the committee that has brief summaries in many of the indicators for performance. And I'm not going to read every one of them, but really just wanted to take a few moments to highlight some of those indicators that I feel like as a team of administrators and in some cases teachers, nurses and paraprofessionals and other people who made huge contributions to this year. Helped us to be able to accomplish and also comment on my four goals so that I can paint a little bit of picture, I think is a reasonable self-assessment of my performance in the, in the first year as a superintendent in, in the midst of a pandemic. The first thing I want to focus on is the indicator 1C, which is on assessment in the instructional leadership. Standard, given that there are no MCAS results from the 1920s school year, our instructional and administrative, administrative staff are relying on class-generated assessments at all levels, as well as eye-ready and best assessment data, as well as quarter course grades at the secondary level. Many teachers and counselors have also shared that the pandemic has caused students to quote unquote forget how to learn. Once students arrive to campus in hybrid and in
You froze.
Person learning, teachers have focused on IFRS?
Yes.
Okay. Where did I stop?
Maybe start that sentence again.
So, once students arrived to campus in hybrid and in-person learning, teachers have focused on helping students with many learning skills, such as executive functioning, motor skills and attention tasks, presentations and discussions. These types of adjustments help students to reestablish the foundation skills they require for most effective academic and social emotional learning. And I appreciate the insights in this area chaired by teachers on the Pandemic Response Advisory Committee. And information is also being guided to help us develop not only summer programming, but planning for students to come back in the fall anticipating students may still, from such an extended period of time of being out of school, may have a lag in those learning skills. In the area of evaluation, the administrative team worked collaboratively with the GMEA to minimize the collection of artifacts and lighten the administrative workload of teachers during the pandemic. I've also done the same with the administrative team. Flexibility has been provided to all staff for the submission of artifacts and evidence, including flexibility in deadlines for submission to principals upon request. This approach provides instructional staff with more time to focus on teaching in a very print learning environment and adapting instructional techniques that required extensive learning with the new instructional technology. In data-informed decision-making, the student learning indicator. The pandemic, and again, not having MCAS scores. Elementary schools have gathered student growth data in reading and mathematics. These mid-year measures from the Benchmark Assessment System or BAST were shared at the previous school committee meeting, shared at a previous school committee meeting. At the secondary level, some of the data that we included were quarter failure rates. These data were shared to make the committee and school community aware of the impact that remote learning was having on student growth and achievement. The end of year BAST assessments at the elementary levels will be taken in June and will use to be able, used to help guide summer planning, guide planning for summer programming in the opening of the 2122 school year. I have included in one of the attachments, an accounting also of anticipated course failures at the secondary level, along with the mid-year presentation that was submitted earlier in the year. The data indicate that our students have experienced significant academic and social emotional deficits during the pandemic. That will really be the focus of our development of a new three-year strategic plan. Management and operations and standard two. This is one of the superintendent's goals, which was to effectively manage the district's school reopening plans through ongoing updates to the plans and effective communication with public health officials, family, staff and the school committee. Working with the administrative team, the school committee, district and public health officials, GMEA leadership representatives and the Pandemic Response Advisory Committee. We successfully completed our pandemic reopening plans for remote and hybrid learning in August of 2020. The plan remains posted on the district website and the link is here in the document. Over the course of the year, we adapted to extensive changes in advisories from DESI and public public health organizations. As an example, I've provided an adaptation to our protocols for addressing potential COVID cases in schools by establishing the COVID exposure response team known as CERT. So there's an attachment in there, which is a one-page point of reference for us to follow CERT protocols when we have a concern, had a concern about potential COVID exposure or a symptomatic student being sent to the nurse and how we go about cleaning and contact tracing. We've also collaborated with, with our district nurses and public health agencies to receive onsite rapid COVID tests and remain engaged in pool testing. We will continue these programs into the summer as the virus remains a presence in our community and those programs have been extended in through the summer. These tests, along with our COVID mitigation protocols, have served to help our schools significantly decrease the likelihood of transmission of the virus. Human resources management and development. Kept the committee as of our ongoing challenges in hiring various positions throughout the year in order to have our schools fully staffed, safely receive students into hybrid and in-person learning. Recruiting, we advertised beyond school spring and added our postings to online recruiting websites such as Indeed. And new staff are supported and trained by veteran teacher mentors in the mentoring program, which is overseen by two talented veteran teachers, as well as the Director of Teaching and Learning. The pandemic also presented unique personnel circumstances throughout much of the school year. In the period of the FFCRA and after its expiration, I addressed more than 40 requests for leave or for accommodations made by district employees, each one which had to be discussed with our district attorneys. In some cases, we were able to collaborate with GMEA, craft memorandums of agreement that allowed our students to continue working with our own skilled and talented teachers. In to C scheduling and management information systems. The school, the staff school year began in August, the administrative team completed a schedule for training days, the first 13 days of the school year to allow district teacher and support staff to receive extensive training and support for the vast array of instructional technology that has been used throughout the school year. A great deal of credit to go around, including all of the members of the administrative team, but in particular, the efforts of Tina Mahady, Hadi Hop, David Brown and Mike Holloway and the tech support team really did a remarkable job of implementing that training. And Tina and Tina and Katie also a phenomenal job of training teachers during the summer so that we had a pool of teachers who were prepared to provide support to their colleagues as we started off the school year in remote. On the February vacation, just prior to our students returning to campus in hybrid learning, we also conducted a training for substitute teachers that were able to attend, but had very positive feedback on their level of preparation when arriving to schools in a very different school environment. Because if you remember, we started hybrid on February 22nd and we had to gather up our, our pool of, our pool of potential substitute teachers and get them trained on the protocols and give them initial exposure to the technology the teachers were using in classrooms to work with those students who were in remote. Mid-year, I worked with the administrative team, district staff, the school committee, students and families, also to add early release days district-wide. For a period of time, this reduced student green time while in remote learning and provide all school staff time, all schools staff time to convene to discuss and support large number of students who were struggling in the remote learning model. To D, law, ethics and policies, I've consistently consulted with our district's school attorney to ensure that we are following all of the requirements of the open meeting law and correct procedures to ensure that I have operated within the scope of my authority and put items before the school committee for votes when the, when the committee has authority. In other cases, I have asked the committee to provide me with such authority when possible, allowing the district to move more quickly to adapt to changing advisories during the pandemic. And I appreciate the committee's willingness to get together on such short notice to continue making, make those changes to allow us to be able to pivot a little bit more quickly as things change during the course of the year. In to E, fiscal system. Effectively manage the current budget and endemic-related resources to prepare an FY22 budget that supports academic and social emotional learning. Director of Business Operations has provided exceptional management, leadership and communication skills with town finance and select boards throughout the FY22 budget development process. By attending these meetings, I was able to become familiar with the structures of budget development, including how Montague's affordable assessment figures are identified in the budget development process and influence the process in developing the entire district's budget. In addition, our collaboration with our towns resulted in significant contributions toward making necessary safety updates to our schools ventilation systems by supplementing our expenditures with federal pandemic funding sources or extended to the towns by the federal government. Director of Business and Operations, Director of Teaching and Learning and Director of Pupil Services have also collaborated to successfully write extensive grants, including the rapid completion of the grant that I mentioned earlier that paid for the Sheffield Summer Program in 2020 and provided the viewing of I am not a racist, am I at the middle school and high school? The collaboration with the Town of Montague and Franklin County Technical School resulted in us securing funding from the cannabis impact fees contract with licensed drug and alcohol counseling services to support our students and families who may be experiencing challenges as a result of the pandemic as we head into the next school year. I believe that the district is currently financially positioned to effectively manage the ESAR grant resources, use our end-of-year assessments of student growth and progress in order to address the academic and social emotional learning loss. Starting as early as this summer and going through the next several school years. In terms of family and community, community engagement. We surveyed Emily several times this year. The summer survey indicated the reluctance in the community to return to air of the progress and readying our facilities, updating them on staffing needs and community COVID presence. In addition, I have regularly kept the community aware of changing guidance, access to community and support, community and supports for COVID-related resources, food service deliveries from remote and updates to various safety protocols. I've also kept families aware of changes to learning models throughout the year. And these communications were translated and provided also to non-English speaking families in the community. And in standard four. In terms of cultural proficiency, the superintendent's goal. Test the district's proactive and reactive structures to address the ongoing need for our district to effectively fight discrimination and ensure all our students are safe, welcomed, and culturally proficient citizens. While we await the results of the Communities That Care Coalition Survey on capacity to address issues of race and cultural differences, we've begun planning for professional development for the 2122 school year. Teachers in each of the schools completed surveys on professional development needs and wants, and the Director of Teaching and Learning is meeting with teachers, teacher leaders to draft the 2122 professional development plan. Training around equity, race, and culture, as well as training on addressing the needs of students who have had traumatic experiences, were all requested by teachers in each of the schools and will be an area of focus for the administrative team's development of our new three-year strategic plan. We want to assure our teachers and staff are trained effectively, engage in dialogue with colleagues, parents, and students about challenging issues related to cultural difference. We have established a structure for reporting, tracking, and responding to incidents of potential racial, gender, ability, or any other forms of discrimination. Next year, we will seek to train student leaders as bystanders, active bystanders at the secondary level. Students can provide necessary support, their peers at the secondary level, and will take the lead in delivering instruction on harm-doing and harm-doing behaviors and how peers can safely intervene and report incidents or safety concerns among peers at the secondary and elementary level. A significant part of our summer work will be to identify data sources to also show potential disparities between student subgroups that will allow us to establish targets for improvement of a proactive nature and make adjustments to policy and practices that facilitate those improvements. So as I had mentioned in a previous meeting, not simply talking about how we respond to incidents of discrimination as an indicator of our effectiveness in dealing with those issues, identifying the areas where there are clear inequities in our data and seeking to put policies and practices in place that help us to set targets to overcome those inequities by moving that data in the right direction. And some of that I had mentioned earlier is, you know, graduation rates post-secondary outcomes, where they choose to go after high school, as well as accessing challenging coursework in school. In terms of communication, in addition to the family communications addressed in standard three, I've also worked hard to keep staff informed of the progress toward reopening, resources available in the community, and keeping them informed about changes in COVID-related advisories. In terms of continuous learning. For me, I have successfully completed year one of the three-year new superintendent induction program. I'll continue through subsequent years of the program. I remain a member and regularly attend the meetings of the Franklin and Hampshire County Superintendent's Roundtable. Experience and depth of knowledge in this group has proven to help me in my practice and at my request. The administrative team also completed an assessment of my skills as a leader. And this survey offered for me a point of self-reflection for areas of strength and recommendations for improvements in more effectively working with the district leadership team. And I appreciate each of my administrative colleagues taking the time to honestly fill that survey out earlier in the year. It has been very helpful in helping me to set the stage for summer work and into putting together a new strategic plan. In terms of shared vision, superintendent's goal, another superintendent goal here. And on this one, I really feel like I cannot give us any credit for making any type of progress to develop a school, develop and implement a school district marketing plan. There's not been very much time to address school choice marketing for the district's schools during the past year. High school effectively added and recruited students for our new Innovation Pathways programs in health professions and advanced manufacturing. And I am in the process of developing committees to examine the following ideas. In particular, I think we have more than 15 people at the secondary level who are, with whom we are already planned to meet to increase our inclusive instructional practices to ensure that all students have equitable access to grade-level content and skill development. I want to examine the potential for vertical programming in mathematics that provides all students with a trajectory of learning that allows them to access advanced mathematics courses. You know, as, as you know, or may be aware, it is one of the greatest areas of inequity in Massachusetts schools, and I believe it's a potential school choice marketing niche. If we could have our curriculum begin as early as we start with numeracy, have every student be on the track to be taking algebra in the eighth grade and to be taking advanced placement calculus when they're seniors. Because if some students can't make it at that pace, they fall back to grade level, and we can still provide them with an outstanding education that's going to provide them with the opportunity to complete the coursework that they need to be competitive for a variety post-secondary options, including college. I also want to take together a committee and team and have had several staff members and some administrators express interest in enriching our capacity and the next steps to provide a language program for our students to become bilingual in Spanish. And I would like to reach out to families to hear about your, about potential programming that might make us more competitive, such as before and after-school programming, and work with the administrative team and the school committee to look at the feasibility of such programming ideas. Through the staff professional development survey process, we've begun to gather necessary information to assist in the development of a three-year district strategic plan. We'll be reaching out to families to gather their input about the, about the coming school year, the support needs of families, and to hear their thoughts and ideas about school and district improvements. And finally, in terms of managing conflict, I do believe that we have made progress this year in creating a more cooperative and collaborative relationship with the various bargaining units in the district. I will continue this effort as both the district and employees in the district have a shared interest in the success and the financial sustainability of our schools.
Thank you. In addition to what Brian has just read for us, there's a lot of other documents that he's included in this email series. Is there anything anyone would like to ask or comment on at the moment? I'm sure we've all just absorbed all of that immediately and can recite it back if necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and if anyone has any questions about filling out the survey, the technical issues, or the dates, or any of that, please feel free to check back with me or Sabrina at any time. Again, we can't really discuss with each other, but we will discuss it at our meeting on June 22nd, when we have the results back from everyone's surveys. Sabrina will have them compiled, and we will discuss them at the time and then vote on our product. Any questions on that? All right. Again, thank you very much, Brian. Next, on our business agenda discussions about issues of equity, anyone having anything at the moment that would fall under that category? Anything new currently, Brian?
No, the comments that I added to the to my, my performance against the standard summary that I gave to school committee, both on addressing issues of equity and also addressing learning loss. In, in terms of the next agenda item, I know that both Christine Lamoges and Diane Ellis are here. Anything that you guys want to add on the planning of summer programming? You're muted, Diane.
Sorry about that. Hi. So yeah, so our planning is definitely underway. I feel like we are, although it feels, you know, it's always late, always feels like, you know, families need to make these plans, so I do apologize. There's been a lot that has gone into the planning this year as we've both tried to answer the call for not just providing services for our special education students who qualify for extended-year services, but also really looking at that learning recovery and how to best support students who may just show some, you know, some gaps, given the unusual year that we've had with remote and in-person learning. So we did send out a mailing last week with registration paperwork for about 151 pre-K to grade five students that were identified through building-based processes to have these students join us for a, what ultimately could be a six-week session. So we wanted to provide a menu of choice to families if they wanted to participate in just morning academics, in morning academics and afternoon enrichment, to be in a two-week session, in a four-week session, or a six-week session, so that we could try to, you know, accommodate families who have different scheduling plans or will be out of state. And so we are, I know Christine has been working with Joni, and there's, there's Christine. She's on my Zoom screen now. But I know Christine has been working with Joni and trying to, at the middle school, Joni Menard, and trying to tease out a little bit about that middle school structure is going to look like. But we, we wanted to get the communication out for our elementary program. In addition, we have a collaboration with Parks and Rec, so we're going to be able to offer some spots to families at the Parks and Rec program. Ages five to eight, the program is at Unity Park. And ages nine through 12 is at, they're going to have a site at Sheffield School. And I've been working on a flyer to basically put a summary of our programming on our website. And I hope to have that out with filling in a few more blanks next week. So Christine, you want to add to that?
I do. Thank you, Diane. Hi, everyone. I just want to let you know that I did work with Principal Menard today, and we sent out all the letters for middle school tutorials and for the high school credit recoveries. So those went out in the mail today. We are going to be offering Apex Learning, which is, it's going to have to be remote because we unfortunately don't have any staffing at the moment. And I'll be working with the kiddos in middle school to kind of be their coach for the summer and checking in with them periodically and hoping that they're, you know, working through their tutorials to make up those failing classes. So that went out today. We're really excited. We have a deadline, I believe, for elementary and for secondary for June 1st. And we already have some parents that called us and have signed up. So we're, we're looking pretty good as a district as far as offering summer programming. So Diane and I are still working, you know, constantly on this together. So it's going well.
And I will add, although I've commented that it feels late, I will say that everyone that I know in special education and in districts right now are really struggling trying to pull off summer programming. It's been a hot, hot topic on listservs for directors around the state. I think it's the challenges of this year, people have kind of opted out in a lot of ways to just kind of regroup this summer. So in, in a number of ways, we're really ahead of the curve in being able to put together a six-week program for our elementary and this, this Apex program. And we do have a teacher and staff on board for the high school credit recovery. So those is Christine, those letters are going out. So overall, pretty positive.
Thank you both. Does anyone have any questions for Diane or Christine while they're with us? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
The next item we've already taken care of under business, the Gill Elementary School lease agreement we voted. Next up is discussion and potential vote to change the Assistant Principal's contract. Brian?
Oh, I want to say thank you to Joanne. She did include in the, in the packet a summary of, of the difference in terms of what we're requesting, given that we don't, you know, with Tom Gaffigan retiring at the conclusion of the school year, his position with previously a 210-day position, the fact that we anticipate need for more substantive and expanded summer programming, that we wanted to expand the position to be year-long because that will have an impact on scheduling, planning, being involved in our professional development planning over the summer, as well as putting together strategy for each existing school year, especially under such challenging circumstances. So the change contract that I've provided does have the same level of compensation because it also provides for vacation days as that are very similar or actually exactly the same number of vacation days as the current high school principal contract. In addition to the fact that the previous 210-day contract has a salary range that's at the high end, as the Gaffigan was a longtime educator and experienced administrator. But we're looking to change this to the 261 day position or 260-day position with with vacation time mixed in, similar to the high school principal and the other administrators in the district. And adding also that the Assistant Principal would be entitled to a holiday on December 24th each, each year when the date falls on a weekday.
Any questions or comments about that?
Jane?
Yes?
I just wanted to add that the 260 or 261 days is really just based on how many Monday through Fridays there are in any given year. A couple of times it's been recently. I'd never seen it before. It was 262, so.
Okay. Okay, so the request is to change the
We lost you, Jane.
So moved. Not the lost part.
Do we have a second? You're back.
Did you get a motion and a second?
No second. Mike made the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you for forging on. Any questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor? Okay, looks like we have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We've also completed the vote for the submitting the Gill Roof application date. We're going to discuss again and vote on the Transportation Coordinator job description at our next meeting. Joanne's going to work on a bit more information. And the next item is acceptance of scholarship donations. And Joanne has included that information in our packet. Joanne, if you'd like to review that?
Sure. We received a few different donations to establish some scholarships. So the first one was $20,000 to establish a new Borbo Bordeaux Family Scholarship to be awarded annually to a Montague student of good character with an interest in math and engineering. The hope, the family hopes to continue to give to the scholarship fund so that it will become a perpetual endowment. But at this time, would like to provide $2,000 scholarships each year. And I can talk about all of them. The second one is former Terrence Falls High School teacher George Bush has donated $25,000 for the purpose of establishing a new scholarship in his name to be awarded to a Montague student who is college-bound and excels in both academics and athletics. This will be an annual award of $1,000 to a Terrence Falls High School senior. The class of 1964 recently established a scholarship with a donation of $4,000. The class of 1964 recently established a scholarship with a donation of $4,040 from the, from class members. And they didn't give information on how that would be awarded. And the Bernard Plaza class of 1957 scholarship received donation in the amount of $297881 from Maria Bon Savage, sister of Bernard Plaza. Annual awards go to a student with an interest in world languages. Cynthia put that together for you.
All right. That's wonderful. And the committee has to vote to accept the donations?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'm moved. We accept the donation.
Bill? And Kathy second. Any questions or comments? I'd like to say thank you so much to everyone. Scholarship money is always so important to our students. That's very generous of all the donors. Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor? Very unanimous. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. I think we have just about finished the list. Next, we have approval of minutes from the meeting of May 11th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Heather?
Second Haley.
Second Haley. All those in favor? Okay, I think we're good. If you have any agenda requests at the moment?
Are we getting together on June 2nd, maybe? Is that all right?
Probably, yep. Usually the Monday or the Tuesday.
Thank you. You read my mind, which my voice was silent about here. So let us know if you have any requests. And the next scheduled meetings we have are June 8th, which will still be a virtual meeting anyway. By the time we have the June 22nd and the June 23rd, we'll have to update you what information we have. Probably discuss it next time, see how much we figured out about what's allowed, what's not allowed. That's one of the issues. I know, as I say, Tina Mahaney has been working tirelessly to figure out what is allowed, what isn't allowed, how to accomplish it currently. But since things have changed, there, it's very different what's allowed in person and what's been allowed when we're not in person. So we're working on figuring all of that out either way. And as we get more information from the state, that should help us. If we are indeed virtual on the 22nd, as I've mentioned before, Sabrina will forward the information from our combined evaluations of the superintendent just before the meeting. And on June 23rd, that meeting will be reorganization. It will be the day after the Montague has their town voting, which will include school committee members. Gill has already voted. That information won't be forthcoming until Montague has also voted in order not to influence any voting. Okay. With that in mind, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mike? And Heather? All those in favor? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Night, everyone.